It's five o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Please everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, roll call.
Sarda.
Here.
Crandall.
Here.
Greenaway.
Here.
Kiefer.
Here.
Sternquist.
Here. Uh, a quorum has been determined. Uh, next we have approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Uh, I have a motion and a second and a discussion. Roll call.
Kiefer.
Yes.
Sarda.
Yes.
Crandall.
Yes.
Greenaway.
Yes.
Sternquist.
Yes. Next I have approval of the minutes of the September thirteenth regular school board meeting and the September seventeenth special school board meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of that September thirteenth regular board meeting and the special meeting on September seventeenth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a discussion. Roll call.
Greenaway.
Yes.
Crandall.
Yes.
Sarda.
Yes.
Kiefer.
Yes.
Sternquist.
Yes. Uh, next is any direct or indirect conflicts of interest does anybody have to disclose? Next we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to, uh, pull item F off the consent agenda, please.
Madam President, I'd like to pull item L.
Okay, so we have, um, item F and item L pulled from the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion, uh, with these two items removed?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with F and L removed.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Sarda.
Yes.
Kiefer.
Yes.
Crandall.
Yes.
Greenaway.
Yes.
And Sternquist.
Yes. So, would you like to address F at this point?
Yes, Ma- yes, Madam President, I would like to change the wording in that, in item F to accept the resignation of Sandy Kramer with regrets.
Second.
Do you have any discussion? Roll call.
Crandall.
Yes.
Kiefer.
Yes.
Greenaway.
Yes.
Sarda.
Yes.
Sternquist.
Yes. And then item L.
Just call the vote.
Um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve L on the consent, consent agenda.
Second. Uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Kiefer.
Yes.
Sarda.
Yes.
Crandall.
Yes.
Greenaway.
Abstain.
And Sternquist.
Yes. Uh, next we have public comment. Did anybody sign up for public comment?
No.
Uh, next we have good news and student achievement, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Mittel.
Good evening, Board. Uh, first I'd like to say congratulations to the boys soccer team for advancing to the state championship game which will be held, uh, this coming Saturday, October sixteenth at Howard Wood Field at seven PM. Uh, concluded earlier in the day. Safe travels back for, uh, those players and coaches this evening. Uh, so two weeks ago, the Yankton High School celebrated homecoming week and Mr. Dratchek and I can't thank the staff and students enough for all their hard work and dedication to putting on an excellent week that showcased, uh, lasting memories and school spirit all around. So every event, uh, hands down was better than last year, given last year's circumstances, but, uh, overall can't, can't thank the, uh, students and staff enough for all their hard work. And then last month, uh, Yankton High School senior and junior classes voted for their class officers and it goes as follows for seniors. Their class president is going to be Elijah Upton, vice president Madison Beetz, secretary Hannah Jussel, class treasurer Lauren Ter- Tereshinsky. For juniors, their class president will be Aiden Brandon, their vice president Addison Slakcek, secretary Jayden Pluster. And we didn't have anyone running for treasurer in the junior class, so they will have to share those responsibilities. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, just have a little bit of good news to share from, from Beetle School. Matt's gonna pull up some pictures of the students painting the plow and I know that our student council is excited to be more active again this year with some different projects. Our student council at Beetle School this year, uh, we have fourth and fifth grade classes represented, two chi- two, uh, students from each class, Easton Dimmer and JD Kendall, Gabe Slowey and Mathia Olson, Harper Anderson and Pierce Camp, Harper Arns and Josiah Lael, Oakley Alk and Addison Meyer and Brenna Elwood and, and Braden Brookland. And as you kind of look at the pictures of the plow, um, that was a design that was decided on by our student council and crafted by Brenna Elwood. She did the, she drew out the design and then all of our student council had a chance to do part of the painting. And I know that they're having fun by participating again in more things, some of the things that they've been involved with so far this year. Uh, they help out weekly on Thursdays with our sack pack distribu- distribution. Uh, during the homecoming parade, they walked and handed out candy and we're excited to do that. We had a beautiful, beautiful, uh, afternoon for that. They did the paint the plow event and then they organized dress up days throughout the week of homecoming for, for all of our staff and students as well. So I appreciate their efforts and their leadership and, uh, it's nice to have students making positive choices and helping lead our school.
Thank you. Um, next we have, uh, school board ALL award. Are you gonna speak on that?
All right, I'm a little delayed here because I'm also the business manager tonight. He was out in Rapid City watching his son play. So, um, I just wanted to make a comment regarding the school board award. The Yankton School Board has received the ALL Award, which is the Associated School Boards of South Dakota's, um, board recognition. And they received, um, the highest level that is, is possible with a gold. And so tonight we'd just like to recognize them for their service and their accomplishment on, on this award. So congratulations.
Next is the recognition of Sandy Kramer, um, in her retirement this year.
Yeah, so I get the privilege of, again, Jason was going to do this and, um, I get the privilege of doing this tonight. Sandy Kramer has been with us thirty-eight years. This is her thirty-eighth, um, year as our child nutrition supervisor in Yankton. And I just wanted to highlight just about three or four things that she has done and the list is much longer than that. But twenty years ago, she started the school breast breakfast program here in Yankton. Uh, fifteen years ago, she started the summer meals program. She also launched the Angel, um, Fund Program here in Yankton. And lots of people and businesses give money to the Angel Fund and it's really to help, uh, kids out, uh, when they're in need of, of lunches and there might be something that's happening in a family that it's been difficult to be able to do that. Most recently in 2016, she was awarded the Pam Kettering Spirit of Voluntarism Award from U- from the United Way for her work with the Sack Pack Program. And there are a lot of other things that I could say, but I want to end on this one. Um, we want to congratulate Sandy on her retirement. We'll miss her. She'll be with us through the rest of the school year. And it's her birthday today, so happy birthday Sandy. Congratulations.
Sandy, do you have anything you want to say? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, this is your Oscar moment.
Well, Jason promised I wouldn't have to talk. Um, I just want to thank you guys for always supporting every time I came forward to with an idea. And the principals will always, uh, accept it. Mr. Flemish talked me into a lot of things. And, uh, and not only leaving out, I'm leaving concessions and, um, most of you don't know this, but I was single when I started this job. And so I actually been in the shop longer than I'm married, so my husband is moving out of thirty-seven years. He got talked into concessions. So I am taking him along with me when I retire, so he won't be doing concessions either anymore. So, but anyway, I just want to thank the district for everything they always supported with a lot of what we do in our program. So thank you. I have a national school lunch week this week and, um, the P and D ran a wonderful thing they're gonna have this week. They're going to, um, do a fundraiser for Stan. Um, since we don't need the Angel Fund, they, this year because of the free meals, they are gonna donate the money that's raised for, um, the Sack Pack Program. So I'll be looking for that paper this week, so that's exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for all your service. Uh, next is school finance one oh one. Back to you, Dr. Kendall.
Okay, thank you. Um, you should be able to see, um, a document up on the screen. We'll try to enlarge it a bit for you. Um, each year, the school has to do a report on the teacher compensation accountability. And essentially what this is, is, as you all know, the legislature passed a half cent sales tax, I think it was four years ago. And the purpose of that was to increase teacher salaries and to make us more competitive in the region with other states. So I just want to point out how well the Yankton School District has done in this community in compensating our staff. If you look at the very top of the report, this is for the twenty twenty-one school year. And, um, the average teacher salary in Yankton was fifty-three thousand one oh eight. The average total compensation, which is salary and benefits, was seventy-two thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. If you go to the very bottom where it says state averages in the box, that's where we can, can compare how Yankton has done with the state. And the average teacher compensation, and again, that's salary and benefits statewide in FY twenty-one, was sixty-four thousand two seventy-one. And again, that's comparable to Yankton at seventy-two thousand six eighty-seven. And if you look at the average teacher salary in the state in FY twenty-one, it was forty-nine thousand five seventy-seven. And in Yankton was fifty-three thousand one oh eight. And the last thing that I want to point out on this report, in the middle of the page where it says district name, there are several ESD schools listed there. I think there are nine of them. You can see that Yankton is ranked about four hundred and eighty dollars, um, below the number one spot, which was Brandon Valley. And you can see that we were again at seventy-two thousand six eighty-seven for total compensation, which includes salary and benefits. So I'd like to congratulate our school board and our community on doing a really great job with keeping our salary and benefits competitive for our teachers. And then the most important part of this report, if you look at the far right column under accountability, we met the accountability, uh, with no issues. So that's the report on the accountability and it's a good one.
Uh, next we have an update from Coke Hazard Architect.
All right, while Keith Thompson is making his way up here from Coke Hazard, just a quick little review. Um, several months ago, the school board put out an RFP for different architect firms that we could interview to bring in and take a look at what could you offer in looking at our school facilities with a focus on our elementary schools. And so I believe we narrowed it down to three or four firms. They came in, they were interviewed, they were scored. And Coke Hazard was the firm that the school board selected. So tonight Keith is gonna do a walkthrough of what has been done so far and then what our next steps are. So go ahead, Keith.
Thank you. Go to the next slide already. So this is the slide from our interview and this is essentially the same process we've been following all along. And we're about halfway through this sort of pyramid of building data, getting all the background information and really just about to really kickstart into the true study for early childhood facility and, uh, future plans for elementary facilities. And we've gone through and basically gathered all the data in the objective side and then we'll be moving into subjective discussions. Next slide with the dates here. So we kicked off in May. We had staff interviews, uh, late May. Took a little bit of a break as principals went home for the summer, uh, did a little bit of work with the facility tours and the director of facilities over the summer. But then, uh, gathered again early August with staff coming back, uh, to do the first educational adequacy review, which is reviewing their schools for, um, needs, function, uh, day-to-day, um, issues that they're seeing and how we might address those. And then just, uh, in the recent past here, about a week ago, reviewed the initial facilities conditions assessment with the principals. We'll just get into a little more detail next. Those initial interviews again were held with principals and members of the administration, um, at the administration building, reviewed all the background. Um, uh, Dr. Kendall provided us with kind of the history of what the district has done over the last ten plus years. Uh, and then in detail reviewed floor plans, uh, as provided by the district. Little changes, of course, happen over the years, so wanted to get all those captured. With that, reviewed current and planned uses, um, have some principals that have been at their facilities for years and some that were brand new. Um, so got their perspectives, uh, reviewed how COVID nineteen had affected facilities and how that might change some uses going forward. And then other considerations as the discussions, um, went for each school. The next, uh, major task was facility tours, late June, um, met with Jim Reinhardt, his staff, uh, typically the head custodian at each school, and then reviewed the major aspects of each elementary school, uh, starting with the site, playground, parent, bus traffic, all those things. Uh, reviewed basic structure of each school, um, architectural considerations, which a lot of which have been addressed, uh, with the last study in about twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Um, no major security or safety concerns, some ongoing accessibility needs at some of the schools. And then reviewed finishes, general maintenance items, uh, both interior and exterior on the schools. And then had our engineering team come along and review mechanical and electrical systems, identify what's gonna, um, be approaching, uh, replacement, uh, periods in the near future and then what else might be upgraded just to match current standards. Then the August meeting was educational adequacy, again, meeting with all the principals, uh, together this time. I should have mentioned the first round of interviews was kind of school by school with a principal and an, and administrator. Uh, this time we got the whole group together so they could kind of hear what each other's needs and thoughts were and how they might, um, uh, be different or the same across all the schools. Reviewed capacities, looking at, um, the maximum of twenty-three students per classroom and what that added up to for each school versus what the actual oc- uh, occupancy is and enrollment is in the recent past and just got updated for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then reviewed obstacles and opportunities for each school and those, of course, varied quite a bit based on the, the programming and, and physical, uh, attributes of each school. Moving into late September, just reviewed our initial findings, um, with the principals. These are one-on-one again to make sure we heard everything correctly and captured everything correctly. Uh, Jim Reinhardt was also able to touch on this and basically, uh, walk through our findings point by point for architectural, safety, mechanical and electrical and just confirmed we, we had everything right. Uh, there was the possibility of Johnson Controls doing a study. Uh, that did not pan out, so our next step, uh, two things concurrently here. Going out to all school staff with a survey that they'll be able to respond to in the near future. That's gonna be sent out hopefully yet this week. We'll give them a week or so to respond, just with any concerns, comments that they want to make for input into this early part of the study. Uh, and then our mechanical, electrical, engineering team will be revisiting and applying estimates to the needs they identified, uh, for, you know, near, middle and long term for each school. And all that'll, um, build into a, a cost study for each school that combines architectural, mechanical, electrical, site improvements we've identified. And then that will be fed into this community task force, um, as a background when they're considering what might happen to each facility. So the next one's the overall schedule. And we are just at the beginning of that green phase here in October. We've got a little mark for the board meeting we're at tonight, early October. And then as you can see, uh, it basically extends out into April. We've got the dates coming up here. This is just an overview that was sent to, uh, task force members, their charge, uh, what they'll be looking at over the next three months or so. So it's essentially gonna end in a elementary facilities master plan that'll be presented back to the board here. Uh, we've got a number of meetings, uh, on the calendar already, starting late October and meeting about every other week, uh, through December into January. Uh, the open community meeting, January fifth, that'll be, uh, publicized and hope to get good attendance there. That'll review some initial, you know, findings from the task force, but really open it up community-wide for input. So everyone that wants to have a say gets that chance. Uh, we'll have another task force meeting after that, just to review and incorporate any, uh, relevant information that comes out of the community meeting. Uh, initial plan, we'll come to this board at the February fourteenth meeting. Then we'll make any necessary final revisions, adjustments, present a final facilities master plan, March fourteenth. Uh, the diagram on the right has also just been modified from our, or what we presented at the interview, a pretty typical process. Our partner firm, World Architects, will be leading the, a lot of these meetings, um, something they're very familiar with. But essentially they're gonna break this, uh, break the information gathering down into as many discrete groups as they need to. All that feeds into the central task force committee there, the maroon bubble right in the middle. And then that feeds through into the board and from there we'll, um, be implementing any facility changes, revisions or new facilities that come out of this study. That's real quick what we've done and where we're at and the, the look ahead for the next few months.
Keith, could I, and Matt, could I have you scroll back to, I think, maybe four or five slides to the community facilities task force page? Yes, thank you. So one of the things that I wanted to point out on this slide, if you look at the very bottom, it talks about the Forward Twenty Twenty Four Strategic Plan. And I think it's important to note that, um, when we put that Twenty Twenty Four Strategic Plan together, we had put out a survey to our community. And I think we did that maybe three years ago. We had about fifteen hundred people that responded to the survey. And one of the areas that came out of the survey that, uh, our community wanted us to really take a look at was our school facilities and in particular, our elementary school facilities and with an emphasis on an early childhood development center. And so I just wanted to give a little bit of background as to kind of how and why we got into a facility study that's focused on our elementary schools.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I'll just add, being on the buildings and grounds committee, I've been, um, very impressed with the experience and knowledge that both Coke Hazard and World have brought forward. Um, so far I think this process has gone very smoothly from my standpoint and I've heard great things from the, um, the schools and administrators and things as well. So I look, really look forward to the next, uh, step in the process in the, as we move forward.
Uh, next item on the agenda, thank you very much, uh, is the substitute teacher policy.
Yes, I can make a few comments about that. Um, I think it's no, to no surprise that, um, we've had, um, last year and this year, it's been a bit challenging for substitutes across the district, not only our teacher substitutes, but bus drivers. And, um, you know, all across the board, we're finding that it's, it's really difficult to find somebody, uh, when we need to. And that's just not in Yankton, it's across our state and across our country, um, even locally where workforce is really an issue and it's a real challenge. So we've brought forth a change to our compensation here for our substitute pay. We have not increased or changed that for a number of years. And so tonight, that's what's in front of the board, is to change the compensation for our certified subs and our non-certified subs. And then in the consent agenda, we also had part of a plan also to incentivize the substitutes in there. And the reason it's in the consent agenda is we are, um, amending our grants through there. And that portion of it says that after you have subbed for ten days in the district, you would be compensated an additional one hundred and fifty dollars. And also for our bus drivers, um, as an incentive to continue driving and also, um, hopefully to attract some additional bus drivers. There's also a pay incentive plan in there above and beyond their compensation. So one of the goals we have obviously is to keep our kids in school. And in order to do that, we have to fill positions. And we've run into a few weeks at school where we had four or five subs, um, short throughout the district. And in some cases, we've had buildings that have had two or three or four subs where we couldn't get anybody and so we moved people around. And so we're really hopeful that we'll get some additional substitutes out of this and we think that it's time to increase the compensation accordingly.
Uh, this is an action item, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment to policy part seven D dash substitute teachers as presented.
Second. Uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Kiefer.
Yes.
Sarda.
Yes.
Crandall.
Yes.
Greenaway.
Yes.
Sternquist.
Yes. Next item is the facility use agreement. Justin Olson is here to speak about the YHS gymnastics facility use agreement.
All right, thank you for taking the time to consider this one-year proposal, uh, for a, a one-year agreement between River City Gymnastics and the eighteen school district. Uh, this is a unique situation because I'm currently the gym manager at River City and also the head coach of the gymnastics program, program here at YHS. I just want to just give a brief, um, cap, uh, big picture of basically what we're looking at, um, and how this proposal kind of came about. Uh, River City moved into a new facility, uh, just recently. Uh, we settled into a thirty-six thousand square foot facility located, uh, at the mall, um, the old JCPenney building. And, and the gymnastics facility we have now at the high school, uh, with our program growing, uh, our gymnastics program, we currently have the ju- junior varsity, the varsity and also the middle school program at the gymnastics room, which is approximately five thousand square feet. Uh, so with the addition of roughly six times the space over at the new facility, uh, in my mind, gymnastics, um, is a, is a high-risk, uh, type of situation as far as for the athletes and try to keep them safe. So, uh, I'm looking at, uh, this proposal being, uh, a safe environment, so it alleviates congestion. It also provides those kids for, uh, an opportunity to get on more equipment, uh, some equipment that will also provide them, uh, that's easier on their, on their bodies uh, so they can train, uh, at, at a higher level and be more consistent. Another, a, a great, uh, thing about this proposal would be, uh, for home meets. We'd host all the home meets at, at our gym at River City. And that alleviate, um, a lot of setup, um, from the current staff. setup from the current staff, it alleviate, alleviate the, the maintenance, and also the custodial staff here at YHS to be involved with the home meets. So essentially, it'd fall upon collaborative effort between the Yankton High School gymnastics staff and also the River City staff to set up the home meets, tear down the home meets. And of course, if there's any gymnastics parents in here, they, they know the feeling of tearing down a gymnastics meet after we host one here at the school, and it's, it's a pretty tedious thing. So this would alleviate a lot of that, and then, obviously, with cleanup, that alleviate the custodial staff here at YHS, that relieve them from any cleanup that they would have to do. In closing, I guess, it's just with the emphasis on athlete safety and providing adequate space and equipment for the gymnasiums, I hope that you would consider this one-year proposal going forward with the River City Gymnastics and Yankton School District.
Justin, what's the nature of your agreement with the mall management? Is it, is there a lease situation?
There's, yeah, there's a lease situation, and we are currently paying on, on our lease. It's a, it's a month-to-month right now lease, that hasn't been discussed as far as a long-term. They do, they have offered us to purchase the facility, so I know that they don't have any other plans in there, and so, we're weighing our options to see if that is something that we wanna take on at this time.
Do you want you to purchase that property, that area?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Does anybody else?
I move we approve the facility use agreement with the Yankton Gymnastics.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crandall.
Yes.
Sarda.
Yes.
Greenaway.
Yes.
Kiefer.
Yes.
Sternquist.
Of the stain. Next item is executive session. This is an action item.
I move you, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think, Terry, I think in your motion.
Just put the whole.
South Dakota courtified law.
Yeah. Mr. Crandall?
Yes, ma'am.
I think in your motion, you have to include the indication.
I didn't catch that.
The SDCL, you need to include that in your motion.
Okay, oh, Greg, gotta read that? Okay, in accordance with SDCL one twenty-five dash two, paragraph three, I move we adjourn into executive session.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Crandall.
Yes.
Kiefer.
Yes.
Sarda.
Yes.
Greenaway.
Yes.
Sternquist.
Yes. So we'll move into executive session.
Well, the new elected, the newly elected. So, maybe there are any that subscribe, I think typically the word subscribe would be something to use. So I think that there's certainly reasonable basis for that too. But, what else? So, Democrats have talked about this, taking the oath, and still, we're going to be important. And from now on, there may be, it means as silent, the administration of all school districts, both the office, and child. What does it mean, does it support the office, for the, uh, the governor, uh, the administration, or the president, or the district? Alright, so what does it mean, file? Uh, I think, so the president said, I suspect it was a writing, uh, some code. Uh, but now today, you have a videotape of everybody writing self proof. That's where it is, and you're over there. So, you, you have a digital record of it. And if you had somebody write it, you would identify that, but if they filed, so your digital copy of your repeat. Uh, where your repeat, uh, repeat. So, is it file? Uh, I think that, I mean, we may be good, our administration, that we know what it is, or do we have records of it? Video of the morning? Sure. A lot, yeah, maybe that a lot or not. So, alright, that will, uh, uh, okay, so, very important. I think that makes good sense. So, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know if it's made, we made it, literally and technically, you have to subscribe as a signed document. You can make it, I think that we can also make a really good argument that you don't need to do that. It's all for me, I think it will go down in the case, someone can sue you over it. Uh, there's documents a lot of changes, like, but you can just amount everything, if it's all due, books, gifts, on the small markets. Then it has no impact on anything, and purely, uh, particularities, uh, physically involved, they may give some chances, and what, that is, uh, it is. There are several things, uh, for, you know, to do all those, so, uh, that's. You know, that's a particular, uh, this is the answer, if you're not, uh, subscribed, if you're, uh, that, that, that. So, the argument I just made, that showing you that it is anything but sort of, uh, and it's, is it beyond the reasonable, all things together, that is, uh, uh. Okay, so, the next question is about this failure, oh, no, failure, people were related to twenty eight, all by, especially, especially the dress. But after the agency, maybe it's all, that's the thing, it's a, it's a, it's a shell, especially, uh, especially to point, uh, the, uh, okay. Well, so, the, you can't, because obviously, if somebody is disqualified, maybe go back to, but for thirty years, everybody could be disqualified. Because we've never done it, right? So, I don't know, I don't know how, and you get that third argument over there too, so, um, but, you know, so there's, there's, that's, that's.